...or whatever, something for my house. But that's okay. The next item is, uh... A rule of business. I would have to vote to approve the minutes, uh, of the general proceedings for the community of the whole from January 7th, 2020, but recommend, recommend it, edits if needed.
So...
Move by trustee, please, like by trustee, uh, you want any question?
Trustee Dale?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Motion to carry. Uh, motion to approve the general proceeds for the regular board meeting for January 14th, 2020, and recommend edits if needed.
So...
Move by trustee Weber, second by trustee Todd, any question?
Trustee Dale Brewer?
Yes.
Brewer. Yes. Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Dale?
Yes.
Motion to carry. Motion to approve the general proceeds for a special meeting and public hearing of February... Special meeting and public hearing of, uh, February 11th, 2020, with the recommend edits if needed.
So... Second.
Move by trustee Todd, second by trustee Brewer, any question?
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Dale?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Motion to carry. Public comment. All questions and comments must be directed to the married speaker, may comment on any matter pertaining to the business of Congress with it. This speaker will allow one opportunity to speak with the three members. Any other game to debate, counter, reply, or thoughts. All comments prior to response. Hold it until turn three. Touch it, touch it, see if it was...
Mr. Mayor. Uh... Mr. Mayor. The other day at school board meeting, I saw you stood up and did this. And said, "I need you all to help me." What do that mean? You just said you couldn't do this. What do that mean?
And you said yesterday?
At, at the school board, you stood up before the audience.
Did you say yesterday?
Talking about and say, "I need you all to help me." What were you referring to?
I'm asking you.
You're answering question.
I'm asking you, you said yesterday?
What do you... No. At the school board thing, when they had the kids up there last week. Okay? That's one thing. The second thing is, I'd like to say, when we look at the minute that they want to be read, I got some here from 2015, December 8th, 2015, to January the 26th, 2016. And online, I would like the people here to look at them and see. And to see what the trustees and the board did from that time on. But these are the minutes, and you can look at them at where you're going to. That's the only thing that I have to say right now. Can you please explain that to me tonight?
Judy Gass here. I am associated with the plan group, and I would like to talk, uh, about them. For over ten years, the plan group associated themselves with the village and functions that they had within the, uh, community center as well as the fire department. We enjoyed what we were doing, and we feel we did it well, and we like doing it. And then all of a sudden, it has stopped. In the past, I was contacted by whoever was taking care of matters wherever they were, with the fire department, with, uh, the community center, and things were arranged ahead of time. The plan group picked up the books at the library, which is not an easy thing for these ladies to do with, uh, these heavy boxes. But we took them and we labeled them, um, each one of the books that the child was going to get, that they were a donation from the McConaughey Library. And, um, and then we were there to set them up and to hand them out. We did this for, um, Christmas, for Easter, for pancake breakfast with Santa, as well as the Easter bunny. Uh, the plan group allowed, um, the fire department to use their Easter bunny costume, so he was there. And all of a sudden, there's nothing at all. I can understand it with the fire department because of things that were going on with them. But I do not understand with the village. First of all, the right hand doesn't know what the left hand is doing. Nobody knows who's in charge of what. I don't know who to go to to ask, "Do you want us to continue or don't you? Do you want us to give out books or don't you?" Um... It's totally up to whoever's, uh... Running, uh, the situation as to what will happen. But I would like some answers as to what's going on. I know there's a lot going on with the fire department. I can talk to you later, uh, I don't have a problem with that. I also would like to talk about the fact that I came here tonight with expecting to see the forensic audit on the, uh, agenda, and I don't see it. When I asked someone about it, they said something about needing additional paperwork. I think that that was needed rather than let the residents feel that it was going to be taken care of tonight. They should have been told it's not going to be taken care of tonight or next week. They have to get additional paperwork. I have read and reread so much stuff, and I, I really and truly feel that some of the... Some of them need answers because it's leaving the wrong, uh... The wrong statements out there for the residents, and it's getting near, um, election time, and I think this is why a lot of this stuff is put out there. I read about the fact that... Mr. Mayor, you indicated, this is what was said on the social media, that you saved the village $60,000 a year by not having Chris Williams as our administrator. And I feel that whoever wrote that, and he's here tonight, didn't stop and think about the fact that you gave somebody else a different title. You didn't give them the title of administrator. Because in your campaign, you said you didn't need an administrator. You were, uh, retiring from your job, and you could handle that. So instead, you got a HR person. Now, I think it's commendable that you saved $60,000 a year by not having Mr. Williams, but that doesn't explain about all the money that was spent for the HR lady going at $6,000 a month. Also mentioned ghost payroll. Nobody ever stopped to think about the fact that when Mr. Williams was hired, he came to work in good faith, ready to start his job, and he would stop from doing it. It had to go to court to get him in here to work. So if he got paid for that time that he was willing to work and had everything he needed, that was not giving him something for nothing. And as far as ghost payrolls go, nobody said a thing about the fact that Joe was away, took a vacation to Florida...
One minute.
And got full pay.
It's not time.
And got full pay for, um, going there. Didn't miss a day. But he wasn't, uh, entitled to any vacation time anymore than they think that Mr. Williams isn't entitled to the time he got. I too have been in contact with the Attorney General's office. If people are going to say one side and not the other, they need to remember that it might be their own fingers are slamming in the door. I also want to mention that not, I asked a question. I didn't ask for anybody's personal, uh, matters to be brought in public or anything else. I did ask a question about personnel. You indicated at the end that you will not discuss personnel at an open board meeting. Well, again, I think that's commendable.
You can have mine.
I think that's commendable, but I have to say that that's not true. Because it wasn't that long ago, and it is a part of a video, where you talked about Mr. Williams being incompetent, inability to do the job. And you did this at an open board meeting, and I was here. And I've seen the video, and it's very clear. So... I guess it's, who do you like and who do you, who don't you like that you can talk about him in public? We're looking for people that are going to be working together. Tonight is another indication that it's not going to happen here. For two weeks now, they're trying to get the, uh, closed session at the end of the board meeting. And you indicated we're going to play that game, huh? Well... It's a game on your side, too. They don't have a piece of paper in front of them with the words written down exactly the way they need to be read so that this can happen. What happened last week was not right. That was not... That was very rude. And I think that you need to discuss or show them what you're reading as to, as far as what they need to say to get that through you. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, uh, board members. My name... My name is Arnold Coleman. Uh, my question, well, it's my understanding that the village has an annual audit. I'd like to know how much does that cost? And also learning that in closing this report is imaginative, that it has the listings that point out what's needed to be addressed or corrected. Over the years, the findings have, these findings have been accumulated to a total of six pages. My question is, this has the current board, or right here, reduced to six pages of repeat findings available to you in the annual audit. If not, should the board do their work in due diligence of reviewing those repeat findings of the annual audit before spending $100,000 per year through a forensic audit? I mean, the audit, uh, this forensic audit will only, firstly, will just repeat what the annual audit already has in findings. Okay? That audit is available to you now. That's my question.
My question, Carol Coleman is my name. My question is, where is the fraud or the theft you have claimed is going on? It is my understanding that the village has $800,000 in re, in a reserve account. $300,000 allowed to the Department Rich Fund, and $1 million in the water fund. Again, my question to the board is, where is the fraud and the theft that the trustees claim is going on?
Pat Couch, I don't think I've ever heard any one of these trustees say there is theft and fraud going on out of any of their mouths. I, if I heard it, I didn't hear closely enough to say that this is what our trustees said. There is reason for a forensic audit, or we wouldn't be doing one. It should have been done at the beginning of this term for this mayor. It should have been done prior years, but it was never done. We really didn't feel the, maybe the need for it, but right now, we need it, and we are grateful to every one of the trustees that are going forward with this forensic audit. One thing that they have to look at was why was there a document that the mayor issued, and it... I don't know if you want to call it fraud or what, but the mayor put out an memo and said, "Shred all these documents. Shred, financials, bank statements, phone bills, et cetera, need to be shredded. Disposing of documents properly will alleviate liability on the village, should any of this information be disseminated." That's from our mayor. If you're going to dispose of documents, there's a proper way to do that. You should have a book listing, "I'm disposing of this, this, and this." Where's that book if, if they were disposed of? I also last week mentioned about the pit bull that's still in my neighborhood, in my backyard, and I'm hoping that I can get the chief to give us an update on what's being done or has been done with that. Also, um, I mentioned a week or two ago about, uh, a FOIA that I had put in, that I had asked for documents on a particular residence. I didn't get all the documents because I understand there's some other documents came out after I put in that FOIA. Now, I don't know who missed over those, but when that house was inspected, there was an inspection prior to that resident. But I understand there's still a lot of problems with that home. But whoever let the FOIA not get completely answered, I'd like to know why. Because there were some things that I did not get when I filed that FOIA that came out after the fact. I don't know why. I wonder. Thank you.
John Nico. Last week, I asked for a show of hands, which I, I feared that they've never asked for. But I will ask again that, at the end of the meeting, have a show of hands that people would love, be able to see the executive session at the end of the meetings, not at the beginning. I don't know why, I mean, maybe you're afraid to see that people in the village may want that idea. One other thing come up, uh, water bill. Apparently, we did not give a water bill. We checked with the, the villager. Said it was billed out for the last month. Luckily, we paid it because they sent the water three shut-off money, and I thought it was a ruling that you got to get a seven-day notice that you're being shut down for the water. I think it's always got to look at what the water department is doing to make sure it's running properly. But I would still love to see at the end of the meeting here, when you have your comments saying, "Oh, I can't ask it myself." I would sure, I think the people would like to see a show of hands that who wants to meet at the end of the session. Thank you.
Senior strategist, especially your resident. My family's been in this town ever since 1960, and I've seen a mayor that this town has had, found and go. Question I have for you, Mr. Mayor, is, what do you like and what don't you like about being mayor?
Good evening, Mayor, Lord Steve LaRocque. Mayor Boy, I come for you before this evening to ask, residents have heard you say on numerous occasions that you're watching the money. You hold the purse strings. So maybe, uh, you can explain to me the result of a recent Freedom of Information Act I submitted, and I intend to check register for village council. Now, I don't know if you're watching the money get spent as fast as it comes in, and I don't know if you're just watching it go out the door. Because between May 15th of 2019 and January 15th, 2020, this board expended and approved for payment $119,000 in legal fees with that one village owner alone on what I'm sure is necessary legal work. Residents are waiting for their streetlights to get fixed. Residents are waiting for their parkways to be restored two, three, five years from being dug up from a garden break. Other residents are waiting for their driveway aprons to be replaced. You do so much for the residents, right? Right? You found money, you found $120,000 to spend on legal fees. You better start finding the money for the residents. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Adam Brown. Could you provide some clarity for me? I want to know whose responsibility is it to make sure money is available to pay funds? And bonds? And I also want to know, um, some clarity on, um, the money that's being moved from the water fund. Looking back on accounts since about 2014, what is the purpose of the money? Being moved from the water fund and what is it used for? And I also want, um, a little bit of clarity on the parking rights situation. Um, I dropped some children off over there, and girls have to come back. Do you have anything over there for the girls to do? The girls cannot participate in anything. And I also think it's absurd that as a taxpayer, that I would have to send the other children back in with a dollar for open job. I can understand being paid for different programs and things we have to do, but for open job, I think that's not it. Thank you.
Okay. Um... But at the top, the comment, first was just a comment. I took it as a comment. I don't answer, as I said before, personnel questions. But it was asked just now, whether I touch my arm. I have no idea, could have been whatever. I don't know. At the last event, the last event I went to was yesterday. They're talking about that. I was talking to people period. So I don't know, the event I went to, before that was Black History Event. So I've been to a couple of events in the last few days, the school district, and, uh, whether I touch my arm, I have no idea. But... It could have been, it could have been a lot of different things, I have no idea. So I, to give you an answer to that one, I do not know. As far as the, um, the books being donated, now it has been stopped. Uh, if we have an event, I'm sure, like always, the last two and a half years I've been here, if they have an event, I'm sure Pam's group, the library, whoever, uh, knows about it. They find out about it, they send a representative for Pam's group to come out to the event that we have and distribute the books. Um, right now, uh, we haven't had one in a while, and I'm sure the next one we have, I think, it'll be Easter. And these days, I'm, I'm sure that at that time, that person, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll be getting in contact wherever it is that, you know, donate the books or help distribute the books at these days hunt. The, uh, forensic audit, I'm sure it has been talked about, and it's going to continue to be talked about, and I have some reservations about it, but that's not what this is about. So, um, how it didn't make it on the agenda, I have no idea. I've read that it was, it needed some more paperwork to be taken care of. So that's speculating, and I would think that would be the reason why it was on the agenda, because it needed some more paperwork to be taken care of before it's put on there. Uh, all this, all this runs between 50,000 and 60,000, depending on what they have to do, um, how the auditors have to prepare, gather information. Because if they come here, the information is not readily available. If they have to do anything, they try to connect it. So if the start team were between 50,000 and go on to 60,000 or 70,000 for a one audit. Um... It was already said how much it would cost for a forensic audit, yes. That's $100,000 per year. Um, and that's if they don't have any cost overall. So the average price is $100,000, uh, per year, uh, to do a forensic audit. So however many years you want to do, that's how much it would cost. My whole catch on that, I'm not going to go into that right now, but that's, that's, that's the question that was asked, and that's what it would cost. As far as the, uh, shredding the documents, I don't know, the letter I did have, the letter way back? You don't take questions, but...
Well, that was one of the questions that I had, and it was all...
Oh, here, sir. But you asked, the question you asked, I thought I answered about the cost.
Yeah, but I had another question that said, was the current board has renewed the findings? Have they renewed the findings? That this...
Oh, yes. Okay, yes, okay, I see that, I'm sorry. You just say read, okay. They, they read the annual audit, I'm sorry, that's, that's my fault. I saw that, yeah. Uh, I don't know if the board read the, the audit. I'm not sure, I can't answer for the board, but that audit is readily available, uh, online, and, uh, I think in the, uh... I was thinking, we have a finance, finance office, too. But the audit, the audit, all the findings are online, and then also the management letters also online, too. Um, so, yeah, that's, if the, if the board read it, I'm not, I cannot answer that for, for it to be, because I really don't know, but it is readily available. We, we, we... But I, I don't know, you ask any questions, I have questions that I cannot answer for, so... I mean, if they read it, they did, and they didn't, and they didn't, but I cannot answer for it. The only thing I can tell you that is... The only thing I can tell you that was, that was, um, it is a bit word, that's what I can tell you. Okay, shred, okay, shred the documents. Um, like I stated before, I don't, I may have told people, there could be a lot of different things that we could have shredded documents for. But I did settle that out and if you feel that I settled that out to shred documents to try to hide something, then okay. Then, then, um, you can, you know, I can assure right now on the, on the, um, as a record, I never shredded documents. I never did anything that does to hide anything. I don't need to do that because I'm a, I'm a self-up for it. I got, another person I have to answer to, this person is not on the server. So I'm not going to sit here and try to, to sugarcoat anything like I have no reason to sit here and, and hide anything or do anything underhanded. That's not what I got involved for. Politics, yes, is a dirty game. Yes, it is. But believe me, that's not what I got involved for. I got involved to move this building forward and to put it on track for success. As far as the four-year paperwork, that you didn't get all of the four-year requests, that's something that you would have to, I wouldn't say make enough, break enough for you. I would say come up and talk to powers that be to find out what is it that you did not get, what information that you're still looking for. And if you address it to myself, I'll make sure that it doesn't get answered. Because if you asked for four years, you didn't get all of the things that you asked for, I would not have known that because I did not go and look at the four-year requests. So I would have no idea of knowing if you did or did not get all the information that you're looking for when you put it for a request. Because I don't even look at it for it. I guess there's been, they, they raised our hand. I'm sorry. The board raised their hands and the board has expressed that they'd like to have the executive session at the end. However, sometimes if it's a short one and we need to do a presentation or talk to someone that's going to be here, why do we got to keep that person here doing a whole meeting and then talk at, at the end? But again, if the board does not, as we just saw today, if I want to have the executive session at the beginning, okay, well, not. I'll just ask for it and if they don't want to do it, fine. Uh, but I do resent the fact that someone is saying, I read or I read how to properly do it. I had to learn. I had to learn like any other trustee needs to learn. I had to learn how to make a motion to suspend the rules to change the agenda. Okay, well, I know that. But I didn't get the template. I had to learn that. And I, and I, and I, in the years that I was trustee, I, I made mistakes in that same aspect. I said it wrong for a while, which I had to learn the right way. What do I like and what do I not like about being mayor? About my heart, I enjoy being mayor. I, I, I enjoy making people smile, making people, um, want to come and live in the town that I'm, that I'm mayor in. That's what I enjoy. What do I not enjoy? Stupidity. That's what I don't enjoy. When someone tries to do something out of a hateful reason, and I can see that. But I don't talk about it. But I do enjoy the job. I do enjoy being mayor and that's why I became here. This is my third time trying to do it and I did, and it happened to finally the third time. I didn't give up after the first two. The numbers speak for themselves as far as, um, legal fees. I never looked at that number, but if it says a hundred nineteen thousand dollars to be spent from May of two thousand nineteen to January two thousand twenty, then that's what it is. I, I don't, I can't dispute that. But yes, we do need to look at other things. Sidewalks, trees, side hydrant roads. All these things should be, to be looked at. That's why you're here. That's why you come to the board. You need to come and talk to someone and that's where, and you live there. You don't want to live coming out of hot old streets about to fall, lights on and all. Sidewalks need to be fixed. Those are the things we should try to kind of straighten our money on. Something that's going to give a return to the village that you live in and you pay taxes there. Unless, pay bonds, okay. Bonds, most of bonds, well, bonds period, you flow the bond for certain, certain reasons. You can flow the bond as it flows for this building. There was under the pretense that they were going to float the bond. I mean, they floated the bond. They thought they would get money from businesses coming in, building. And at first, at the first two years, I think it worked. We did get, it's called impact fee. That's when you actually build or you, 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 you live around and you say impact fee. That money went to at the beginning of the building, went to pay, pay the bond for the building, but it dried up. So what they, bond holders have the right to do is levy the tax and it did. So for the rest of the years, that bond was paid through by the tax of, of the taxpayers. And that's, that's any bond, unless it's a protected bond, and those are the ones in your tip area. When you have a bond in your tip area, when your tip, your tip funds pay for that, so therefore it's not a, um, on, on the, um, on the village residence, but the tips actually paid for it. But that money for that bond has to stay in the tip to enhance the tip. You can't take that bond money that you have a bond in the tip and come out and fix streets on it. That's not the tip. Because that's where that came from. And, um, the other bonds that are not, we have to abate those bonds that are paying. That's what we have to levy for each and every year. The bonds that are not in the tip are paid for by the residents, by the taxpayers. So there are some bonds that are not protected by the tip that were years and years ago, but they're still, they're still paid for by the residents who took their bait completely and then they're no longer. Like this bond here for this building, this was paid off two years, well, last year, two thousand eighteen. So, um, now it's not being levied anymore. So that's money that, that the taxpayers are paying. Okay. That being said? Go right into, uh, reports and offices? My report. Okay, I have several things. And first before, again, it's a reading. I have a gentleman here that, um, came to me. He came from a program that they, that we, that they found that he was, uh, working on in, uh, Ford Heights. He was doing their baseball and some of the projects that they were doing in Ford Heights. And I talked, I met him at several meetings and asked him to come out and, and, and volunteer and, and help us with some things started here in the village. For the youth here, um, for, uh, some structural, some structural projects. Not just sit there babysitting, but have something for them to do, have a plan, have a program presented and have something that, that the, uh, the youth in our village and also our younger adults come and, um, can come up and on, on different days. It's not every day is not a day that you can come. It's going to be different days. Uh, but I wanted him to explain some of these things. But I did want to introduce him. He's volunteering right now. When we get the program started, I'll bring the program for the board. Um, there is money for programs in the, um, budget. So I'll bring those for the board when we, when we start doing that. But right now, he's getting everything together. He's, he's getting his personnel and people who are also volunteering uh, for right now until we can find out. And I'm looking at maybe a month. We can see they're doing for a month, then I'll come back to the board and we can go to the next step. But right now, we're getting everything started and we're getting, we got some work to be done in the gym. We got to have some makers work done in the gym. And, uh, right now, he's trying to work through that. But there is one to be some makers work, uh, that needs to be done. I stayed at six weeks ago because I changed the entrance and other things that we need to take care of in the, um, gym itself. So, uh, I just wanted everyone to meet, uh, Mr. George, uh, Green. And Mr. Green, if you would come up and, just, like, oh, just want to give my mind. And just kind of introduce yourself and kind of let the board know, uh, introduce yourself to the board and to the residents. And if there's anything else you can say, I would appreciate it.
Oh, good afternoon, uh, evening, Mayor and your, um, board and residents of Salt Village. My name is George Green. I've been working with the youth for over about forty years. I currently run a baseball program. And, uh, I've been trying to expand the program into Salt Village. I met the mayor, uh, maybe three or four months ago and we talked about doing some things in this village, uh, trying to, uh, stop the problems that they're having at the high school level. And we talked about some ways that we can do that. I needed some place to start working with our kids, uh, in the winter time for, for the baseball, for practicing and stuff. Our baseball program had fifty-two kids last year, from all, from villages all over, uh, University Park, Park Flora's, Ford Heights. But we played mainly in Ford Heights. I helped build, uh, a baseball field built in Ford Heights. Uh, it costs two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from baseball tomorrow. And that's what we've been playing. We're looking, I'm looking a grown program, expanding into, uh, other villages. And my goal is to try to stop the, uh, problems that they're having at Bloom Trail with the youth. I think that our problem is that our youth just don't know each other from village to village. And, uh, the mayor has given me an opportunity to, uh, run some programs over at the gym. I am the person that has had the gym open for the last, uh, week. We haven't had any problems. I have some sheets where the guys come and fill in, uh, sign in. I run the clock for about fifteen minutes. I don't let them pick teams as they come in the door, they sign in. The first ten players that play against each other and we go down the list from there. I don't allow spectators inside the gym. If you're not playing basketball, uh, on Monday, Wednesday and Friday, if you're not playing basketball, then I'm going to ask you to leave because I don't want anybody's stuff to walk out of that gym. It's kind of hard to keep an eye on everybody, especially if you're just sitting around, uh, watching. So we haven't had a problem. Last night, we had about twenty-five high school kids in there, uh, playing basketball. They, they all had fun and they, they kind of walked around. Uh, and, uh, they all came to me at the end of the day and thanks for the structure that they're finally having. They don't have chaos in there like they had before, where everybody's just running around doing nothing. On Tuesday and Thursday, we practice baseball. If you probably noticed tonight, they have, uh, we have baseball practice over there. The kids that we take from baseball are from the ages of four to fourteen. We play in a South Suburban Youth Baseball League. That, uh, they cons, uh, consist of, uh, University Park, Winston Park, Park Flora's, Cal City, Markham, uh, uh, Hazel Press, Ford Heights, Chicago Heights. And I think that might be it. So we play against, we notice guys play about, uh, from the T-ball up to the, uh, from, from T-ball up to the Pony League, Pony of thirteen to fourteen. We don't have a Pony League, uh, baseball field. So that's what I was kind of looking for, a baseball, Pony League baseball field. Bloom Trail has offered to let use their field. The county has, Cook County, Tom Darby, has offered to, to help us out as much as they could, to get a field if we have a place. We find a place to play. The only thing about playing at Bloom, practicing up and playing at Bloom Trail is that their bases are just a little bit longer than the Pony League. Their bases are eighty, are ninety feet and we play eighty. My goal is to, you know, turn, turn these kids around, point them in the right direction, get them in the secondary education through athletics. And, you know, just stop all the problems that we have in our communities. Anybody have any questions?
No. I'm, I'm sure they're going to be, hopefully, you said Monday through Friday.
Mon- Monday through Friday, yes, sir. Monday through Friday. Also, uh, I have enrolled in a class, May the twenty-ninth through the thirty-first in Bloomington, Illinois. Uh, I'm going to become a special Olympics coach. And what I want to do is, uh, try to implement them and to, and get them involved doing stuff in the, uh, the, uh, the village also. Being the guys have a facility here, uh, that would be something that, uh, that is really needed. I know I have a special needs son and, uh, my sister has a special needs son. And just, just watch them sitting around and not being included in the stuff, you know, it's kind of heart wrenching. When he went to, when he went to Creighton High School, he did Special Olympics. So I'm, I'm trying to see if I can bring that stuff out to the South Suburbs out this way too.
And I, I just have one, the last thing. You showed me something about a culinary class and you're trying to get too much started.
Yes, uh, my sister, I, and I could pass off these flyers. God willing, it's not a flyer, it's a qualifications and what she has planned to do. She is a, uh, she taught college, some culinary classes in college. And she wants to bring this, she wants to, you know, implement, and here this is, uh, some ideas that she has. She just puts them, puts them down on paper. And she asked me to get, you know, to take a look. There's a lot of things that can be done within that facility. There's a lot of things that, uh, that people need. There are a lot of needs in the South Suburban area that, you know, if you don't have a car in the South Suburban area to drive everywhere, you know, you have a problem. And, and, you know, we can make the stuff readily, readily available in these areas. So this, this will be a culinary class that she's thinking about, that she would like to do. And then, uh, if the board likes it and approves it, she'll bring the rest of her qualifications in, you know, at, at a later date. But these are just some things, some ideas that I have that can be run out of that facility. As you see, I work for Bear Paint. Uh, I drive a truck every day. And I just make time because to do nothing is not an option. We see what doing nothing has gotten us. So, uh, it's time for us to step up and start helping our youth and, uh, getting them ready for life.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, you opening it up for questions? Do you have a question? Yes, sure. Good evening, Mr. Green. Thank you for coming tonight. A couple of questions that I have. Has the resident earlier stated that girls are not allowed into the gym? Is that true? And if so, why is it true?
Don't ever miss that truth.
Okay, can you explain?
I had about four young ladies come to the gym the other night. I explained to them that if you're playing basketball, sign in. Two of the young ladies signed their name and then said that they don't have their gym shoes with them. And they scratched their name out. I told them that I don't allow spectators in there. One is a, a couple of other ladies, young ladies came with their boyfriends. And I, I explained to them that the way we keep problems down is that you're on the basketball playing, you're on the floor playing basketball and somebody's sitting next to your lady friend talking to her. you're on the floor playing basketball and somebody's sitting next to your lady friend talking to her, I don't want them to think that you are addressing her in a, in a, in a, in a wrong manner. So, to keep those problems from occurring, we don't need spectators just sitting around the gym and causing those type, having that type of problem. So, I asked them just for the spectators not to come in the gym. If they're coming to play basketball, they're welcome to play basketball, I don't have a problem with that. If they're, if they're young enough and they wanna come play baseball, I don't have a problem with them coming to the gym to play baseball. It's just that we're not gonna have a bunch of people just sitting around and stuff start walking out the gym.
Second question, um, the dollar that you collect at the door, is that also true and where does the dollar go?
I don't collect a dime at the door, I haven't taken a dime from any kid. What I did was I went and bought water out of my pocket. I bought water and chips out of my pocket. And I charged up with the water and the, and the chips and all I do is just replenish. And what I, and what I, I'm sorry. And what I told the mayor, that what I would do is at the end of basketball season, when we go full into baseball, I would buy a bunch of hamburgers and hot dogs and pop and just give it to them.
So, mind you, Mr. Green, we're just responding to things that were said.
I'm sorry.
So, don't take it personally.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just know that we're, we're asking questions based upon what we've been told. And as far as the culinary, culinary class is concerned, is there a class that, um, anybody who decides to take it would pay directly to your sister? Or would this be a class that the village is going to offer and she may do it on a voluntary basis?
It's voluntary, all this stuff that I'm talking about, it's, it's voluntary.
Okay, it's, knowledge is power, so that's why I asked these questions.
Yes, that's my.
That's very much for your answers.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Green, I have a question for you. Uh, since you, oh no, you're still like, I'm sorry. Since we just met you?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm quite sure you haven't had a chance to develop any kind of, um, policy procedures for the parks and wrecks, am I right? Are you gonna, is that something you're gonna work on?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Uh, just for, uh, public knowledge, I was the, uh, partnership president for Ford Heights. So, uh, it, yes, I will, uh, I, I will, uh, uh, work on that if that's what, that's what's needed, yes.
Okay.
All right, uh, if, 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 if I'm not needed, Mayor, I've got some kids over there.
Okay.
Uh, I've, I've got some adults over there, but I need to go lock up.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you guys for having me.
Uh, also I have on the, uh, on my report, uh, yesterday I attended along with a couple of trustees, um, at the Wagner School, that's the, um, three K group second, three, three K. And I didn't, I found that, I knew that, but I didn't know that they were talking about, uh, from birth to, uh, second, from birth to, uh, two years old, that they actually, I'm sorry, three years old, they actually have a type of daycare where the parents are actually there. So, that's, that's something that's, that's great. But anyway, I was there for a celebration. And the celebration was a nationwide, uh, it's called the Teach for, Teach Childs Challenge. And this was done nationwide, not just Illinois, but throughout the United States. And Wagner School, which is part of College District, wants to get, you know, first place. And, uh, that was a big deal. That's, that's a big deal because first of all, it's not in the state, not in the city, it's in the United States. And they got, they got a twelfth league, they got a proclamation by LG Sales, which is representative from the state. And then they also got, uh, an award of five thousand dollars to go towards what they need. But that's something that, uh, I just wanted to say, and I just wanted to bring it up, that's something that's a big deal. Uh, it was on the news too, but I, you know, for that, for, for Salt Village to get recognized or something like that for the United States, I thought it was very, very, very huge. Um... I'm looking out there, two of these, there's really three, uh, school board members that are here, um, Radama Brown... Mr. Barrett... (applause) My club friend, uh, um, Margaret Camm, who is... Well, they, they all had shirts, everybody there had these, uh, shirts. And also we was accompanied by our own, our police chief, um, Mount Homebody, he was also there. So, I just wanted to say that was, that was something that was very, very enlightening, uh, to know that we got recognized for something that I didn't even know that existed, but it's, it's really, really, really something to, uh, to be proud of in the community and for the schools. Um, there was some questions asked last week about certain things and I just wanted to get back. Um, and so it won't, you know, you guys think that I, I did write questions, now I don't do anything about it. But, uh, there was a question about the front door, um, not being handicapped accessible. Um, we're gonna try to see if we can, I think we have to go into the program to try to work that out, find out if we can, can do it because the way things are, if that, if that opens that way, then some other things may not operate. So, we're gonna have to try to look at that, uh, right now to see if we can make that handicapped compliant. So, if that's not, if it didn't go in there yet, so we are talking, we are looking into it and we're going to, uh, see if we can make it handicapped, uh, accessible for, uh, those that need to be handicapped accessible. Um, the community development is, uh, looking at, and I'm asking for, uh, quotes for dead trees, uh, the removal of these dead trees in the village, over four hundred of them. And I talked to Public Works about it and we're gonna try to get some, some quotes or some beds to knock down somebody. I don't know if we have enough money to knock them all down, but if they're dead, they need to come down. And we just cannot do it all ourselves, so we're gonna have to go after quotes of that. And I'm also looking for quotes for the streets. And RCT already do so much that a lot of times they don't do it enough, so we're gonna have to do it little by little. We're just gonna have to insert that and make that part of that. And then some of the sidewalks too, especially the very, very back. So, now that we have something that we can start some of this programs with, I'm looking and I'm gonna be asking the department, and there's really only, or maybe two that we can go to and put our hands together to find out how much it would cost so we can get some of these things done. Uh, and also lights. Uh, I know the light issue's been addressed, but there still may be some lights that need to be replaced. And I think most of it is wiring, but that still has to be done. Um, I'm going to, uh, we're, we're still looking at the store. I talked with the village administrator, uh, he's gonna probably, if you're, I'm not sure, give an update. But we are looking to try to break a grocery store here before it, that's my next, that's the number one priority that I have right now is to try to break a grocery store into Salt Village. Um, and we just, but right now we're on the ascending stage, we're trying to, everyone wants to bring in a, um, cannabis, uh, like growing or store, whatever, I'm looking for a store. Cannabis is, okay, people are gonna buy it, but right now I need a whole store. And that's another priority. And not just a small, kind of a store, that's substantial enough that you wanna go shop there. Stores that I wanna go shop in. So, not just a store, just something, a grocery, a supermarket basically, that, that we can, uh, have in the village. And, uh, we have several places we can put it, but right now we have to, and we're gonna beat the bushes and do what we have, we need to do to make that happen. And, uh, we're looking also for an employee appreciation lunch, uh, in March. So, we're looking to do that and that can do the right report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few things that I'd like to update you and board of trustees on. The first one, I'd like everyone to mark their calendars and let me know if April the twenty-eighth is satisfactory for the student government day here at the municipality. We're looking at April the twenty-eighth. You don't have to let me know right this minute, but I need to know if we need to change the date, okay, so that I can communicate with the school district. I would like to give you an update on the census and what the complete count, uh, committee has been doing. Oh, back in December, we found out about a grant which was in phase two of operation that was being provided through Cook County. And so during Christmas break, some of the staff from a couple of the schools and one person from one church, we all got together and we looked at what we would want to include in a grant. Four entities developed grants for Salt Village. To my knowledge, not one of us received any of those funds. I'm not certain about the library, there were one entity as well that submitted, so I see we're shaking our head. So, that means in spite of Salt Village being declared one of the severely under-reported villages, our powers to be did not find suit or fit to allow any monies to the village of Salt Village as we were attempting to do our outreach program to increase the number of individuals who would respond to the survey. But just because they did not give us money does not mean that we're going to not do anything because we know how important it is that each and every one of our residents are counted in this census because it would negatively impact us for the next ten years and we don't need that. So, we're continuing on, we can't do all that we had anticipated. We had looked at our outreach from five, six, seven different angles. We were going to do videos, we were doing, um, mail blasts, we were gonna communicate with Comcast to see, you know, if we could be on, um, video along that line. We were just going to do a whole lot of things. One thing though that we thought that we would do and we were going to do it at each one of our sites and the majority are still going to do that. And that is it's imperative that we provide assistance to some of our residents as they file online. Because with the census now, they don't just go through the door. They start with, uh, people being able to use their spark smartphones or they can use their computers to answer the few questions. However, we know especially with some of our seniors and some of our residents with special needs, they would need some assistance. So, I know that the library is planning to dedicate a, at least one computer to provide assistance. Um, Bloom High School, not Bloom, Trevor, Bloom High School will allocate a couple in their lab to assist people who are in need. And we will have one computer in our lobby that will assist people as well. So, that piece is so very important, so that's gonna be the biggest push right now. And that is so that people will know that there is assistance with them completing that census. But the meetings and everything that we were just all done whole for, it, it's not as much planning as we had anticipated, so we won't have as many meetings as we were having. But nonetheless, we're going to get the job done. I need the trustees to know and anyone else that if you're planning an activity though and you need some materials that focus on the census, if you can shoot me an email or just tell me, uh, if you need materials, let me know the date of your event and an estimate of the number of people that you're anticipating so that I can make certain that I can get some materials to you. And know that to get them, that means begging, borrowing, I'm not gonna steal, but I will be begging and borrowing. I wanna talk to you now about the candidates forum that's scheduled for tomorrow night. And I'm certain if you're on Facebook and wherever, you know that I have been blowing it up and I've been begging and pleading with people to please come out. I think that it's very important that our elected officials who's counting on you and your vote, for them to get into office, for them to know that we have expect, expectations as well. If they want our vote, they need to hear us and let us know what they're going to do for us. Right now I have twenty-five people who have confirmed that they will be here tomorrow. I promise you, I do not want all twenty-five of those people to come here and see ten people. Even though we know that every vote counts, but we want to make a remarkable difference in terms of their perception of the village of Salt Village. So, therefore, I need you to come out, listen to their two-minute spiel and then communicate with them. It's gonna be a very informal, as they come in, we will announce them, they will get up, they will talk to you, they'll walk around past your information, you can ask them whatever questions. I am planning to have at least where the judges are concerned, a list of all the judges so that then you can mark on that piece of paper which ones were remarkable for you. Which ones do you think that is worthy of your vote, that you will use that knowledge as you go to vote on March seventeenth or during early voting, which starts March second. Please come out tomorrow. Let's talk about the FO, the FOIA and OMA training. I mentioned it a couple of weeks ago. And sometimes, you know, I should probably just be a little quiet because as a result of me mentioning and reminding you that you needed to do the OMA training, we have a FOIA request. I'm trying to figure out which ones of you have done your OMA training, which ones of you have not. So, I have one trustee to do it today. I'm going to ask if you know that you have not done it. Please do it tomorrow. Well, maybe Thursday. Get it in, okay? Thank you. Um, where minutes and accounts payable are concerned, uh, the trustees asked and they prevailed that accounts payable materials will be in the back for you for your review during minutes, I mean during meetings. I've attached the minutes and the accounts payable together. Tonight, I printed out fifty copies. So, that was a total of about eight to ten pages per person. And quite a few of them are gonna go there in the garbage. So, I'm going to, I'm, we're playing around with how many copies to make. If I run out of copies, cause I am for the next meeting, I will be decreasing the number of copies that I make from the fifty maybe down to thirty. But if we run out, just be understanding, you will still, you can still get one. It's just we're trying to figure out how many and what to do so that there's not a lot of waste. So, don't scream and holler at me if we run out, okay? Um, another thing, it is customary and it is in our code that where public comment is concerned, yes, we know that it is a required, uh, function that we have at any open meeting. We have in there that each person is able to speak three minutes. And what's customary in a lot of places and it's in the code too, usually if you want to take part in public comment, when you walk in the door, you would sign your name and say, "I'm ready to do a public comment, I want to do a public comment, please don't shut down." And I'm wondering if that's something trustees that we may have to consider because more and more frequently now, we have people say, "Oh, she can have my name, she can have mine." I don't know who yours is, you know, and so like tonight I had to... You know, and so like tonight, I had to say, "Who said that?" So it would be just a way of keeping up with who wants to make public comment, who's declined, so we can just do a little better plan. But that's the first time that I'm mentioning this, and it's just something that I would like for the trustees to take into consideration. Mr. Mayor, that completes my report.
Okay, thank you. Village Administrator, Mr. Chris White.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much. I have a report, and please, or don't take me to a woodshed because I didn't email this to you earlier. But with that said, just for a quick moment, I'm deviating slightly from my report, and I'm just going to echo some things that the mayor said. The irony is that, you know, there's a slight dissonance around here on some levels. But one of the things is, a lot of the things that we are working behind the scene collectively, sometimes we have competing views of how things should be done, but nevertheless, there are some things that we are working collectively to make happen. And to the mayor's point, when he was staring down some businesses that want to come in here and do some candidates, well, actually, they wanted him. But we were very clear about the messages, like, okay, that's great, but you want our resources, this is what we want. And we've been unwavering on that, you know, position about securing grocery store here, as well as I know there's some other corporate authorities that are working diligently on that as well. So just to be very clear, there are a lot of collaborations that are going on. With that said, one of the things I've been working on as well is working with our C-MAP department, our street policy, and also some grant applications that we're going to be applying for as it relates to our street improvement. In addition, working with some of our contractors that we already entered into with agreements with prior to my arrival about revenue enhancement with our utility auditing and also the collection of fines. In addition to that, I've begun assessing some area operations based on some available data points around that, and will be ongoing with that. Additionally, I've had the wonderful pleasure of collaborating with our Director of Community Development to implement strategies and opportunity to revest in our housing stock and beautification. It's clearly critically important for our region. In addition, embarked with our IT department in the process of identifying solutions, upgrading of our existing operations, which we, you all saw last week presented. And then lastly, which is, this is obviously a partial list, but began an early discussion with our departments around our budgeting and supporting the CAFO process that I know our finance director will talk about and was alluded to earlier. We are in the process of moving forward with that. With that said, I think that's going to complete my report for today.
Thank you. Village Engineer, Mr. Jim Donat.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, Robinson Engineering met with the mayor, village staff, and staff from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, or IDNR. The IDNR is questioning whether Phil was added in a floodplain within the Lincoln Meadow subdivision. Robinson investigated the issue and determined the floodplain was incorrectly mapped by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, and is requesting FEMA to correct the mapping. Village Robinson staff are conducting additional file research to further document that subdivision construction did not impact floodplain limits. That concludes my report, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, that's a question, Mr. Donat. So, Mr. Donat, I think like a month ago, a month or so ago, we've had the board, that ordinance saying that we would approve expenditures out of MFT for a couple of works and do some seasonal work for the rest of the year. And I think last, or two weeks ago, it was mentioned that we found some money to fix streetlights. Is that true, are we fixing streetlights this year with MFT money?
It depends on what we would be doing with the streetlights, but it depends whether we've got enough funds for it, and it depends whether we had that initially in our plan that we sent it to IDOT, got approved by IDOT last year about this time.
So if we didn't get it approved, we're probably not going to do it.
That's correct. We'd have to go back and see what we had in terms of maintenance items that we had approved by IDOT. But I'm not sure whether we had that as a light item or not.
Go ahead, it's a light item.
All right, Village Attorney, Mr. Michael Greer.
Thank you, Mayor, this is a report. Per the board's direction, my office recreated the ordinance following up on the Attorney General's opinion as far as the minutes procedure, and that was forwarded to everyone. And I believe that will be up on the next committee of the whole meeting for discussion. And we also prepared the resolution for the forensic audit, which was prepared today and sent out to mayor, the village administrator, and all of the trustees, and that should be up at the next committee of the whole. Thank you.
Treasury Report, Lieutenant Anthony French.
Thank you, Mayor, Board, Madam Clerk. At this time, I do not have a Treasury report, but I did want to address some of the comments as mentioned earlier. With respect to the forensic audit, I did speak on it last Tuesday. And if I misspoke and said that it would be on this agenda tonight, I apologize for that. However, there is a process, and I've said this before and I'll say it again, Salt Village is unique to the experience that I'm used to when it comes to government processes and procedure. So if I misspoke, I apologize for that. I was not intending to have it on this agenda today. However, I put it out there to be on the agenda to be voted on next Tuesday. One of the things that was asked about was the respect to the findings. Yes, I did speak about the findings. I do not know, as the president alluded to, whether or not the board or anyone else other than myself have read the findings. But I will tell you, because of the challenges that I have been dealt with since I've been here, probably most of them have not been addressed. As mentioned about the water bill not being received, that was something that I brought to everyone's attention prior to, two weeks before the water bill was to go out. As you guys know, because this board tended to bring a lot of things to light at council meeting, we was understaffed, but that did not excuse why the water bills did not go out. The person that was responsible for that, I personally know, spent roughly eight hours to get the water bills out in time. With regard to the water bill, hopefully within another month or so, it should be in March, but unfortunately, it's not coming out in March, we would have the new water bills going out. I found out about a week ago, we still having some issues with the water meter readings that I assumed to my fault that was previously addressed, but I found out that they were not addressed. So once those items are addressed, we'll be having a new water bill go out. Hopefully, I will have that the first round in April. With that being said, you will get water bills, they're probably going to be issued, so if you could please, and I'm saying this respectfully, keep it off of social media and keep it from being an issue. I understand we have to fix these items because it's going to be an adjustment. But once we get it adjusted, it will make your life so much easier because you would get a regular sized envelope, like majority of your bills now. But it's going to be a process. Another thing was asked about the bonds, who's responsible for the bond payment? As the interim financial director, and in most municipalities, the financial director is responsible for bond payments, as well as any other bills that has to be paid throughout the year. So to answer that question, I'm responsible for bond payments. And I think at this time, I'm pretty certain I haven't missed any. With respect to money being transferred from the water fund, I know that was a contentious issue when I first got here. All I can say prior to 2019, I cannot address that or know what happened and why it happened, but I can assure you, and if you choose to verify, it can verify, water fund has not been illegally transferred. Water fund that has been transferred is for transfer of items related to the water fund. Every two weeks that I make a water fund transfer, it's related to a water bill vendor payment. The other thing that was mentioned, the accounts payable list, yes, is back on the table. I will say this, I personally do not think it should be back on the table because it's a draft and because of what goes on in this body, I don't want it to become a back and forth issue about what items on the accounts payable list. But that being said, it wasn't my decision to make that decision, put it back out there, but it is out there. But again, if you have a question, please understand that we have a process in place now with respect to how bills are being approved, reviewed, and then approved at the council meeting. And I think that's other issue. There is a lunch and learn. As of today, I decided I wanted to do a lunch and learn with the staff. All village employees are welcome. I don't know if it's going to be a personal development lunch and learn or a leadership lunch and learn. It's not going to cost the village any money because I'm taking care of the costs myself. It's something that I just want to bring to the board, I mean, not to the board, to the staff, and as well as appreciation for those that have helped me to try to do the best we can over the last few months that I've been in Salt Village. With that, Mayor, Board, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Finance Administration, Andrew.
Mayor, Board, Madam Clerk. In front of you, you have the disbursement, accounts payable payroll as of February 25th. Payroll as of February 14th was $127,243.85. Last week, we approved, I asked the board to approve a per diem for chief to go to a training class. That was approved, so you see that goes a payment to the chief for $500 for per diem expense while he's there, his training class. For tomorrow, I'm asking you to approve $174,854.12. For a total disbursement of $302,597.97. That concludes my report.
Please. Finance Department, now. What is it, the chief?
Assistant Chief. Assistant Chief.
Okay, Assistant Chief, there is another call.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fire Department responded to 33 calls for service for the period from February 6th to February 25th. We do not have any major incidents. We are welcoming back the results of our roster, which brings our total current roster up to 21 members. In regards to Mrs. Cast, there will be a pancake breakfast sometime. I am not personally involved in this stuff, but I will make sure that they do contact you to get the votes up there. And that concludes my report, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go with you with, as the Director, Alabama.
Thank you, Mayor, Madam Clerk, Board, trustees, and residents of Salt Village. In the last two weeks, EMO responded to three calls, two minor calls at CLR, 22400 Block of Clyde, and an order investigation under 2000 Block of 223rd. We also assisted Stager Fire Department with a structure fire, fully involved structure fire in the 3700 Block of Stella Boulevard in Stager, Illinois. And at this time, Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, Board, trustees, and the residents of Salt Village concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. Back to the police chief, Chief Robert White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. During the period of February 12th until tonight, the police department responded to 441 calls for service. During that same time period, officers made over 16 arrests. I did want to give the board a quick update on the SRO School Resource Officer position. I wanted to give the superintendent, we did have several discussions concerning this, the opportunity to present our officer to the board. In the meantime, we are developing a schedule to make sure that it's done effectively as far as him migrating his duties from patrol to the school district. The whole process, I believe, should take around 30 days. Also, there was a comment concerning, I guess, Mrs. Alton's issue. I don't normally address specific cases in front of the public, but I will meet with you concerning that because it is a case, which means that there was action taken, but I don't discuss it in public. But you can meet with me afterwards. I believe that was it. Village Board, that concludes my report, thank you.
Public Works, Director, Capitol Law.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Currently, staff is working, or is working on the north side shop list to level 100. The west was completed today. Staff also from 21 to 225, current day-to-day, had three warm main breaks from this current period due to the weather shift and the ground not having frost landed. Staff has been also out digging B boxes. We have done three B boxes. These B boxes are either for emergencies or off a current list of high bills, and these have to be shut off. 1636 to 15, 1628 to 15, and 22411 Yates. Staff has also been taking care of some of the streetlight complaints. We do have a budget with MFT to do certain movements on streetlights. 13 lights have been repaired as of from the beginning of the month to current. 22162 Cornell, that light is back in service. 1181 Janice, that light is back in service. Four lights on Salt Trail, those lights are back in service. 22128, 221st Street, that light is back in service. There are four lights that were on Mark Collins Drive, the two entrance ones, the virus taken out, and then two other ones on the main drag, all those lights are back in service. Currently, wind pack was out. We have an upgrade to make on the rest of the lights and wind pack to our current light heads. They still have old 400 watt sodiums, they have to be replaced yet. We have a company now, we're doing retrofit on the heads, so it'll be, probably next two weeks, we'll start to replace some of those heads. We also have three lights that come in, had come out and do a disconnect in the box in the backyard, the power box. These are faults underground. We have a company coming out Monday to locate the faults. Soon as the faults are located, we will repair them. The current ones that we have right now that are faults are 1635 to 16th Street. And we have two that are on constants, on either end of constants avenue. Staff is a little behind still on repair to our vehicles. We do have all of our vehicles usable right now for the storm event, but they have all their little issues. Hopefully, we won't have any problems with the current storm, but we will fix them as needed. And then, as I said earlier about the community center building, we are starting some work in the community center. We have some tile work, we have some drawwall work from damage, we have some painting to do, some ceiling tiles. Like we were all saying, we started stripping and waxing the floors. And the last item I have is 221, 225, we had four sewer calls, two homers and two main backups, both backups were jacked and put back in service. And residents are reminded that if they have a sewer backup, they should call the village during business hours and ask somebody to come out and check the main at least before they call a plumber out. And after homers, after 5 o'clock on weekends, they can call the police non-emergency line and somebody will be sent out to check the main to verify that it's not that. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Mr. Weller, for the next board, can you please let us know, or give us an update on the fire arguments? You know, how many we've fixed so far this year, and how many are not working still?
Zero this year.
Zero that?
This year.
2021, so I'm thinking, I'm thinking just for yourself, I guess from May until now, I guess, just for your basis. Thank you.
All right, Community Development, Director, Times Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Development Department, we have issued 138 tickets, 24 permits, and four reoccupancy certificates for the month of February. I want to encourage you all to come out to the Talk to Tanya event where we talk about solutions. We're not there to fight, but to unite the communities together to do projects that's going to improve the community. And that leads me to one of our big projects that we're doing this year. Starting in March, we're going to start demolishing, demoing the firehouses in the Phase One area, that's the Carolyn Peterson Avenue area. We're going to do that in March, as well as get rid of some of the dead trees. And this is going to lead up to our big event, which I'm asking for volunteers to come out and support the beautification program for Salt Village. Again, we're starting in Phase One, which will include all of Salt Trail up to Jeffrey and back by Carolyn Peterson. Jeffrey and back by, uh, Carolyn Peterson Avenue. Um, and we're also going to start on that day, which would tend to, is tentatively set for May sixteenth, uh, doing the trash can murals to encourage, uh, people to keep the, the village clean. Um, that's all that happened on March sixteenth, and I encourage you guys to come out if you want to talk more about it and be involved in this, uh, project or what I consider a movement, uh, please join us at the Talk to Tanya, which is every second Tuesday at ten AM. Uh, and the next one is March tenth. So, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Your reports of trust, reports of trustees, uh, and standing committee, public safety committee trustee Gary Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the next meeting for my committee will be on the seventeenth of March. Should be here in the rotunda about eleven AM. Um, I, I've made phone calls, many phone calls to different grocery outlets, Kroger, which would be Save-A-Lot, first Food for Less, Jet Foods, Aldi, uh, Burkhardt's, and I've got phone calls back from Jet, but there's, they've already, they've been in contact with some current grocery store people who want it, and they're not great for us. That's where we're at on that. I asked them about building in the store, they have talked about activity, so they're looking to add next. That concludes my report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I have a short, um, comment, I mean, well, not a comment, it's like, uh, Ms. McCoy got to leave out something we worked on, I thought was a really, uh, good program that we, uh, that was started with Maggie Jarrett, also, uh, the village administrator was there. It's called the Complete Street Policy. Uh, we haven't got, I did get the, uh, printout for the information, but this is, uh, something that is going to be helpful to the, um, village, you know, we're going to identify the streets, uh, make sure we have stuff like, uh, shelters for the, for the street, try to get some sap outs in here. All it depends on is money, and the big thing right now is, we don't have any money. So, uh, uh, Ms. McCoy will let you know that that was a, that was a great program that we sat here, and we're going to go back and try to get some more information, and, uh, Ms. Jarrett's going to try to find us some money, uh, for this particular program, this great program. That's it on my report.
Okay, uh, President Finance Committee, Director Capel.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only comment I have is that, um, I asked trustees for comments, uh, week after week. Um, I want to put on the agenda next week for discussion. Um, hopefully by that time, we could, uh, have a meaningful discussion, because I still haven't received anything except for trustee Tom was saying she would get something soon, but I have not heard anything from anybody else. Um, and this is something that you guys said you wanted, so it was provided to you guys, um, so we can just move forward next week, have the discussion, put this on the agenda, and then hopefully we'll get this one out. That's all I have.
Uh, Housing and Government Relations, Trustee Sherry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, I didn't realize when I said I was going to have a meeting Wednesday, you have a campaign, um, forum tomorrow night, so I'll have to re- Uh, I still didn't post it because I thought, there's a census stuff going on too, so I'm going to have to postpone my meeting and I'll reschedule it and get back on track in March. That concludes my report.
Orders Review Committee, Trustee Leta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Orders Review Committee met last night, and there's three ordinances that are going to be brought before the Board next week on the committee on the whole. One is the rehab ordinance, spending freeze, hiring freeze. Uh, we had three other, uh, ordinances that we need to look at, but these took some time, so I'm going to reschedule the meeting for March ninth, six-thirty here in the rotunda, so that we can address these three. Uh, one is the clerk's duties, the agenda ordinance that Trustee Brewer presented, and we have an issue with the, um- Yes, it was, it was an ordinance that you presented. And one's for a false alarm, and I'm waiting for the attorneys to check in when it comes to the false alarm. It has to do with our fire alarm, when the, um, fire department responds to a fire alarm, they're finding that residents refuse to let them in. So we need to know what our liability is or what we need to put in the ordinance, because if they look, if they can't get into the house and they go around and look, check the perimeter, everything looks good, and the house burns down, what is the responsibility? So I'm waiting to hear from the attorney on that. And so this will be March ninth, six-thirty here in the rotunda, and we're always looking for volunteers. And that ends my, my report.
Thank you. Public Events Trustee Deborah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The newest updated calendar is on the back table. Uh, just a few things I want to bring to note, on March fourteenth, from eleven AM to one PM, that's on a Saturday, there's a flyer for the Cook County Treasurer, Maria Pappas' office will help with property tax problems. The treasurer's office will be on, on, right here, stand by to talk to residents regarding searching for seventy-nine million dollars in available refunds. You can apply for forty-four million dollars in missing senior citizen property tax exemptions, and they can check to see if you have property taxes that are delinquent or how they can help you with that. So that will be taking place right here in the rotunda on March fourteenth from eleven to one. May, May second is our second blood drive that will be happening in the senior center from ten AM to two PM. That's also on Saturday. In June, we're going to do our community garage sale, which will take place on the twentieth, and that should be hopefully happening outside the village hall area. In July, we are working with the Independence Day fireworks and parade. We did meet at our public events meeting last night. We decided one of the best ways we could attempt to raise money is through an ad book fundraiser. So we'll be seeing some information coming out about that fairly shortly as well. Uh, Valentine's for Veterans program, this is the first year that we did it. Uh, we're going to build up on that and get more Valentines out next year. We're going to start it sooner and hopefully get some Valentines overseas, but we did end up getting some Valentines to the veterans and various veterans hospitals, and I, I'm glad that we were able to, uh, to do that event, and we will continue to do that. Our next meeting for the public events is March sixteenth at five PM. That's timed as we schedule, depending if the, uh, volunteers on the committee are available at that time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, trustee, uh, there was something at the beginning, you said, uh, the-
Um, the calendar's on your back, and also in your box, all the information is in there. What would you like me to repeat? Community yard sale or community garage sale, whichever you want to call it, this one to be on June twentieth. Before that was the blood drive on May second at the senior center, and, uh, that's from ten to two. Everybody has this calendar in their boxes, and all residents have it on the back table. But if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay. Reports of the committees and commissions, senior advisory council, uh, and, uh, with the trouble, we're going to be, uh, by Mr. Paul, we're going to be reporting from Mr. Paul.
Thank you, Mayor. For, uh, the people of South Village, report for this Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, Executive Board meeting for the Senior Advisory Council is as follows. Our next meeting for the Senior Advisory Council is Thursday, March twelfth at five PM, and all are welcome. And also, at four PM that same day, we will be having our first senior club meeting. For more information on the senior club membership, please contact, uh, Chairman Emmett Palmer. Also, come out and join our seniors for breakfast bingo every second and fourth Friday from eleven AM to twelve PM. It's a lot of fun, guys. Also, seniors, don't forget game night every first and third Friday. Come for the card games, such as Big Whist and other games from six PM until ten. Also, committee members will be teaching Big Whist from six PM until seven PM every first and third Fridays for those who don't know how to play. Also, seniors, on our first senior luncheon of the year will be held Thursday, March twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty, from eleven AM to two PM in the senior, uh, facilities. There is no pause for the senior club members and five dollars for anyone else. Open to all individuals fifty years or older. Contact committee member Deborah Coney at seven oh eight, seven one zero four five six four, seven oh eight, seven one zero four five six four. And that concludes the report.
Thank you.
I have a question. Uh, Mr. Palmer, I heard, did y'all hear you say, uh, it's five dollars for nine members to join?
I'll redo what I just said about the five dollars. Okay, it says, uh, all seniors, our first senior luncheon of the year will be held on Thursday, March twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty, at eleven AM to two PM in the senior facilities. There is no pause to the senior club members and five dollars for everyone else.
Okay, uh, new business, I would accept the motion to approve the house payables for February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, in the amount of three hundred and two thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. So, second. The move by trustee Bell, second by trustee Brewer.
Trustee, uh, Wesley.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Green.
Yes.
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
No.
Motion carried. Now, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Uh, in the following, I'm sorry, to approve the following agreements and resolutions now filed in the consent agenda. I'm just asking, right?
I make a motion. And now I read it at this time, right? I make a motion to approve the consent, to approve consent agenda, motion to approve the following agreements, resolutions, and policies. Number one, motion to aid the Nancy Elman County Library with securing and erecting the sign. A resolution amending the appointment of local government directors to the South Suburban Land Bank and Development Authority. Number three, a resolution authorizing and directing the submission of an application to the Cook, I'm sorry, the County of Cook, Illinois requesting community development block grant funds for pro-ramp year. Number four, approve the Ed Paisel Community Center rental and reservation policy. Number five, approve the Welch Veterans Memorial Park rental and reservation policy.
Is this where you ask a question about the policy?
Second.
The move by trustee Todd, second by trustee Bell, any questions?
I have a question. On, uh, the, uh, policy on, uh, on the consent agenda for four and five for the Ed Paisel, uh, Community Center and the, uh, Welch Veterans Memorial Park. Now, it's my understanding, Mr. Brewer is going to start, uh, taking over that program, and it seems to me that he should have some kind of input to, uh, the policy and procedures, that's why I asked him. Uh, there's, uh, four and five, we want a couple of things changed, even though they might be my news. Uh, I think he should weigh in on, uh, any, uh, changes, um, that he wants or should, uh, that is needed for these particular, uh, these two, uh, policies and procedures. It's a good idea to have his input to this, um, because we don't have it right now, so, I just ask that, uh, we, we wait till he, you know, takes a look at this, he, he might have something outstanding that he wants to add, which would be great, you know, because, you know, you don't run around too fast.
Okay, um, first, first, these are the community center rental reservation policies, which he had nothing to do with. And the second one is the rental of the Welch Park, which he had nothing to do with.
Well, uh, as I said, he's, uh, he's going to be acting as the director for these two particular, uh, definitely, oh, he's not.
No, he's, he's going, he's going to jail. He's under jail right now, but he's bringing programs into the jail. These are the rental policies that will revise for the rental of the jail, I'm sorry, because we don't rent the jail out. The rental of the community center and rental of the memorial, Welch Memorial Park.
And he might, and he doesn't have any input to the, uh, rental property, uh, rental, um, reservation policies for the jail?
We don't rent the jail out. Yeah, a question. I have a question.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Green.
Yes.
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
No.
Trustee Green.
Yes.
Trustee Duffin.
Yes.
In the near future, if you want to take something, that's what I'm going to bring up, if you want to take something off of the consent agenda, the time to do it is before you make the motion to accept the consent agenda. So if you feel that you want to take something out of there, then that would be a good time to say, I want to vote on this item separately and not be part of it. The question that was asked was a motion to accept the consent agenda, that means that's the whole agenda. Now, if you want to, if you, if you have reservations and say, I want to take item A, B, or C out of the consent agenda and have it voted off separately, but to say that you want to, to do that, then, you know, does this look like, because that's not consent agenda, no problem. No, but I've been saying in the future, we have, we have to do it that way. It's not to wrong to say I want to take it out, but we came forward on the consent agenda and there's not a consent. Like a hundred percent, okay. All right, um, that being said, uh, comments, comments from the, uh, trustees and the mayor, uh, trustee Brewer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regards to the finances that were brought to the table, the person that is closest to our financial situation, which is our interim finance director, is the one who came and said he recommended that we do a forensic audit. So, for whatever reason, there, there, he came to light and said we should do this. There's a scope of work that needed to be prepared in order to begin the forensic audit. That is the piece of paperwork, one of the pieces of paperwork included to the resolution in order to start the forensic audit. But at the time when he recommended it, he did also say that we have tsunami getting ready to hit as far as our finances. So I don't, I don't want to show the word fraud around too easily or anything like that. What I'm saying is we have precarious financial situation. Our finance director, interim finance director suggested we do this. So I just want to make sure that that's, that's very clear to everybody. And as far as the litigation is concerned, part of the reason the litigation, it's not all about trustees. We have day-to-day operations that happen in South Village. We have union contracts, we have ongoing past and current litigation. We have litigation that was caused by some members of this board, and we have other litigation, some litigation that's been hanging out for like seven, six, five more years. So there's a lot going on when it comes to legal bills, and I do know for a fact that they've been reduced greatly in the several months since the time that was referred to. And then going back to the kindness challenge, yes, I was there when they did the kindness challenge, and I have to tell you that it was absolutely phenomenal to see the kids dressed in their T-shirts saying basically they just want to be kind. They were given a challenge not knowing that there was actually a competition, and they did compete with six hundred and fifty schools in order to win this award, and they didn't know that they had won until that date. They knew they were in the top five, but they didn't know they hadn't won. So to be there when they found out that they actually won and the streamers were going and the kids were screaming and shouting and clapping, it was absolutely phenomenal, and it was very emotional, and I'm glad I was part of it. It's just what South Village needs. One thing I did, I was, we could learn from our children, because their kindness challenge that they did out of the goodness of their heart, not even knowing that there was a prize at the end of it, if they were chosen, we all can learn from that example, because one thing that we all need to know, social media is brutal. Social media may be continuing to get even worse, and I, I implore people, please, take it for what it's worth when you read social media, take it for exactly what it's worth. Most of it, no matter who did or what's I, most of it is not true. It's, it's just put out there to make people basically stop being kind to each other. So I, for one, as a trustee, would always here if you have any questions, to answer exactly what's on social media, whether or not it's true, because if it were me, social media would be a thing of the past. It's really hurting us, more than it's helping us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Bell.
Uh, yes, he has been careful, Jermaine. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, two comments. Uh, two comments. So, uh, somebody in the audience asked us, did we read the audit? I will say yes. Um, I did have a chance to read the audit, I think we got it a year ago, something before this board even was, uh, put in place, and, um, yeah, so, and I think that, you know, there was a lot of audit findings, there was, you know, somebody said six pages, so, so there were a lot, but that's something that, this might ask, can this board read about it? Uh, in my mind, we can, in my opinion, we can do some things about it, but that's ultimately going to be up to the, um, finance department and village administrator to come up with those policies and procedures to put in place to kind of tackle some of those issues. Um, and then also, let's just, the, why the forensic audit wasn't on the agenda to be voted on, and I thought that it shouldn't have been on the agenda at all, because as a, as a board last week, Mr. Finch presented to us, uh, three vendors who he thought would do the job, but we never decided who would do it. So, he made a recommendation of who he wanted to, but us trustees did not say we wanted to go for your recommendations, so I didn't see how we're going to vote on something that we just come to agreement on, so I'm not sure where that came from. Um, but I did ask him last week also to provide us what they, uh, I guess, a cost breakdown of each vendor, how much it would cost us, just using, you know, assumptions, because one vendor could be ten, I'm just pointing out there, ten thousand, one vendor could be twenty, one could be thirty, and we should know what that is before we decide to go forward, with whoever we decide to go forward with. Uh, and that's all I have on the, uh, comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Juszczyk.
I would just like to congratulate the Wagner School, I was unable to attend, uh, due to my work schedule, and also I am glad that the forensic audit is being done. Um, we did give, um, Mr. Finch our ideas, so hopefully that'll be getting done next month, and that concludes my comments.
Trustee Brewer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, um, the financial breaker, Mr. Finch, has recommended that we, uh, look into our financial area. As you know, and those people, uh, residents who've been around here twenty years plus have known, there's always been something, uh, that's wasn't quite right with the finances here. We have always borrowed on Pay, Peter, PayPal, that's common knowledge, and we should be able to get more of our goods and services that we have been getting since they, while we pay our taxes, and yet we don't see any approval to the village. So there are some things that has gone on since, um, May of twenty-seventeen, that the trustees have no knowledge of. Uh, things have been done without the advice and consent of the board, and those are the things that we would have, at no time has any trustee says anything was stolen, or it was fraud. We just looking at a better way of doing the way, uh, things the way we are doing it, because we know since we have some audits that, and, uh, I'm following what, uh, trustee Brewer is saying, that they have shown that things are not progress, things are not segregated, uh, money's moved without our permission, these are things that's common knowledge. So, um, what we're looking for is to give us a clean slate, so we can move forward. We have money, we think, we hold, to do some things for residents, and that's what we are here for, to watch the, the money. So again, I want to say, we need to, uh, look at that audit really well, to find out if we're doing something that we need to do something better or differently in order to get the money out. Nobody has accused anybody of fraud or that. We just wanted to, what's right for us, for our families, and yours too. And that's the end of my comment.
Trustee Todd.
Thank you. Uh, I had the privilege yesterday of also going to Wagner School, and, um, there was a lot of cheers and a lot of tears, it was very emotional, that one of the things that was pointed out, it was the only elementary school that has won this award, so I'm assuming there's probably high schools that have won it, we were the first in Illinois, the first elementary school, and the one thing is, um, LG Sims wrote a proclamation, but yesterday, the, well, the Illinois Senate has declared Monday, well, I shouldn't even say Monday, it'll be February twenty-fourth, will be, um, National Kindness Day in the state of Illinois, so that was really impressive. So congratulations to Wagner School, the staff, District one sixty-eight, the principals, the teachers, it was outstanding. And that ends my comment.
Um, a few items. First of all, the, uh, the kindness day, uh, like, um, it was, it was something that, and it showed that children, that are youth, especially at that age, are smarter than we are, from time to time. I mean, they're more disciplined, but that, that goes to show you what happens, as we get older, that goes after money. But it was something that I saw, that when they got a little loud, or a little boisterous, and they were trying to talk, um, they raised, they, the principal raised her hand, and she put up three fingers, and then she said two, and she said one, and they wrote, by that time, it was too quiet. That's something they learned at that age. I went to an event for the Black History Month, and that was up at the junior, at the junior high school. So you can see the progression, these are your junior high schools, the sixth and eighth grade. They had the yellowscream and everything, just to get the people that were in the audience to calm down. The finger part not out the door, I didn't even say that, but it shows you what happens as life goes on. Now I'm going to fast forward to even that board meeting, where we talk over each other, or around each other, or just, just talk period. We need to learn, I wish everyone that came today yesterday to see, just how it is when they're young, so innocent, and, uh, happy, because they were ecstatic, they had no idea, they were trying to figure out why they were in the, um, jail, but when they found out, yes, they, 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 they got excited. But it's just something to see, and, um, and, and as, as trustee Todd said, it was, it was the grammar school, I was all, it was in high school or something like this, but it was the number one, and it was the oldest upper school in the nation. That's something. So, that part there, I was, I was totally amused, that all of our representatives came out, we had, um, LG Sims from the Senate, Nick Smith from the representative from State Rep, and then, uh, Marcus Evans, and Donna Miller, we had all the representatives that are representing, it's amazing how they came out, it was something that challenged Angela back then, so. But they came out to represent, they didn't have to come out to do that, they came out to be part of what was going on, so, and I, and I do, and I appreciate that. I just have a couple of things as far as, and I'm just wanting to, um, say that, I, yes, the forensic audit, I'm not against it. I am not against it, but I just want to say that, if we're going to spend money, let's spend it on something that was just stated, that you could see in the village. So if we're going to, we have that ability to do that and use the money that we got from the sale of the, uh, gas and watch, which this is the first time since I've been in a, uh, like, the official, that goes back to two thousand and six, that we had it, sir. All those times we, we had to borrow money from here, borrow money from there, never borrowed anything from the water department but once, and that was at the very beginning of two thousand and seventeen. So, but, that being said, okay, let's, let's, let's do something positive. So I'm going to present to the board in the near future, the quotes for the trees, sidewalks in the streets, and I'm not saying we can do them all, but we need to get some of these streets up right after the snow, right after it gets warm in the building, knock some of these, knock, knock, um, do them, I think it's about forty thousand a street, so we have to, you know, look at it and see, uh, which ones we can get done, but I say a whole stretch of the block, I'm sorry, about forty thousand a block to do that, and then the other thing that involves that too, because that depends on where, depending on where it's at, some, some of the curators, they cut down. So I'm just hoping that we can do that, I know there's going to be a spending cut, so please, I hope that when it gets to that point, and we have these quotes, that I don't, I don't, really, I don't mind hearing, but, you know, we got spending cuts in place now, so we can't spend this, this is for the village, that's what the money's for, to enhance that. So that's all I have to say about that, and, um, that being said, um, I'll take the motion for the adjournment.
So move the second.
Who says move the adjournment? Okay, move by trustee Bell, second by trustee Green, all my favorites.